Great, sorry, that cut off. Is everyone ready to go?
Ready.
Alright, I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting at 6:03. And we skipped around a little bit, that's okay. Is there anything for the good of the order?
No.
Not seeing any, okay. Is there anything, review of regular meeting agenda, anything on the consent agenda? That people might want to pull, or? Any questions, concerns that we could note for the regular meeting? Not seeing any, okay. And then, so with that, we obviously already had our Armed Services Day celebration. And just quickly, I would say thank you, staff, so much for that. Sorry I couldn't stay, obviously I'm not feeling great, so I just wanted to pop in quickly, but came home so I could participate in the meeting. The scouts did an amazing job as well, two of them are my children, so a little biased there, but I think they did a great job with the flag ceremony. And what a great turnout considering the rain, especially, so just thanks to everyone involved in planning that. So our first discussion item is Agenda Bill 24-38, municipal annexation of park property with Director Lenishewski.
Okay, excited to do your little screen, but turn this thing.
I'm gonna move the screen over here, though.
Sorry.
You're filmed.
You're in anticipation for a lot so far.
I don't have any requests coming from.
If I'm on the right of the screen, you can see.
There you are. Are you, yep, let me push you over to panelists, and then you'll listen here.
Oh, sure.
And Clark and Ray, will you promote me as well?
Yes.
The great news of Laura is here, all that Stephen Lenishewski thought it works. We are bringing forward a piece of land for municipal annexation. It's a little different process than the traditional annexation would have. Bottom line is we can come discuss how to a motion and.
Recording your comments.
And then, full of a hearing, so it's got some timelines and some constraints that way, but. As far as the city's role, staff will present, council will make the decision, and that will be it. Laura might want to share a little bit on this.
Sure, just a little bit. What is really awesome is that for government, we can actually do municipal annexation, which is a much different process than a traditional annexation. So the rule is you just put your ordinance together, you go to council, you get it approved, if you choose to prezone it. Then within six months, you have to hold a public hearing and go through the prezone process, but as we're also doing our comp plan. If we hit this kind of right, it will, will actually be able to do it as part of our comp plan versus having to do a whole separate prezone. So Steve, Director Lenishewski and I were talking about that today, but this is the first time we drafted the ordinance. So we're, we're really pretty much ready to roll.
And then, you know, the city is still looking to maybe aggregate additional land around it, so if we do. And are able to, you know, obtain some land, we might be able to time it to add it to this, if not, we're gonna just bring it forward at the time of. You know, property ownership, because some, some things are coming up for sale to free, some people may just want to sell, that means they're for sale to free, and then. We can have that document. Prepared every time the same way. Timing wise, maybe it doesn't work out, maybe they won't, I would rather, you know. I think we have the onus, we have to close on property, which can take some time. That way, if we get this one in first, we can start the design, application, interview, part of our programming. Which will have to occur in somewhat near future, it's not super critical yet, but deciding to develop a park itself under City Code versus County Code. Was pretty much the nexus for getting this done sooner than later, and it comes. Not super hopeful, didn't look super unique. We'll do our best to work within our own city guidelines, so, yeah. I wasn't expecting to be much of a show, but, any questions?
Councilmember Shaver has a question.
Uh, let's see, uh, saving and then, I guess, not just saving, but anyway, uh, yeah, this is real exciting, right? I mean, we've been discussing this ever since I've been on council. And, you know, our plans are starting to, to come together, and this is actually probably one of our easier steps in the whole, you know, in the whole, whole process. And I suspect there's little controversy within council on this, and what do you need from us tonight?
Just to head on? No, we're just starting to break a big work forward.
Okay, okay, so, so.
Yeah, the meeting, the first meeting in June is packed, and we'll look at doing something in July, for this topic.
Great, council member Naplin?
Yeah, just a kind of follow up on that. So there aren't necessarily any decision points related, it's a super straightforward, there's no.
I think the only decision I've helped, or. Director Thomas mentioned is prezoning.
Whether you prezone.
For, yeah.
Is there a benefit to doing that versus waiting for the comp plan after that we needed?
That's a hard question, I don't think we have any other way.
There, I mean, it, it's less paperwork to roll in with our comp plan, because it is a prezoning goes by commission council. The year means it takes a little bit longer, and if we just roll it into the comp plan, then it'll officially be prezoned in December. And we'll still own it, it'll still be zoned, so you have to officially put it in your comp plan.
Hey, other questions? Let me know if you've raised your hand too, because I am not seeing very well.
I'm trying to help you with that favor, and.
Okay.
And councilmember Naplin has her hand made raised again.
Yeah, I just.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? I know that we don't have as many tonight, just want to double check before we circle around again.
It was just a phone call, but to.
Okay, councilmember Naplin?
Um, so I feel like I somewhat remember that it was prezoned as R4, is that, does that carry over?
No, because we're taking the coordinates, and if we pre, if we choose to prezone in the ordinance, then we're prezoning it. Which means we then have to hold a hearing, and a process to prezone it.
Okay.
In the comp plan.
So even though in, I think, one of our maps, I think it might show R4.
Yeah, we'll actually quit, uh, we'll quit, we'll actually add a new map to.
Oh, I see the word. Okay, as part of the annexation, yep, so that old zoning of R4.
Yes, will go away, and then we'll absorb it into our comp plan.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Alright, mayor, could you let me know if there are any other questions? Hands.
There are none.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the update on this, and I look forward to seeing it come back again. So with that, we'll move on to our last item, which is discussion on budget priorities with our city administrator.
Good evening, let me see if I can share my screen. Open that one. And let's see if they can make it bigger. Bottom right, oh, there it is. Uh, let me get it bigger to the point of not being. Logical.
Are you able to drag that?
Yeah.
Just being a little wider.
Um, so, very similar to Director Lenishewski, good evening, something McNab's, the administrator. Um, I just wanted to bring back to council, I'm going to make this a little smaller. Um, the results of the retreat that we did back about four minutes ago, where we talked about the budget priorities. On what we believe we had accomplished in 23, 24 biennium, and then the goals for the upcoming biennial budget. So what I have here are the notes from the meeting, as well as the mayor's response, and as well as the goals for the next budget period. I'm going to email these out, but I thought I'd just take a moment to show you what I've done. Um, there's plenty of opportunity to add to the list, so you'll get an email from me. Um, if you want to add to anything that was documented here. Beginning in June, the departments will start having their budget meetings between myself, finance, and the different department directors. So now is the time to operate feedback. Where we're going to start creating our budget books and our budget documents that will both note the accomplishments from this last biennium. But as well as, we want to start programming and budgeting to the goals that you've articulated for the next budget period. Um, so, just kind of walking through, I just want to show you what this is, I'm gonna send it in words, so you can add to it. Please list your name when you add to it, very informal, I just want to collect notes before we go into the department budget meetings. Um, so, again, I've articulated them into the goals that were in the 23, 24 biennium, which were responsive government. Safe communities. Try not to make any motion decisions here. Uh, vibrant economy, so here we talked about, our council articulated that. Their activities that supported vibrant community, or vibrant economy, economic development grants. Um, ensure that ARPA funds were used effectively, we can be in the economic development committee. Et cetera, built in natural environment, so again, anything that you can think of that you think, um, meets these goals, please list it here. Uh, functioning city governments, so be staffing and buildings. Parks and community events, I think we have a lot to put in here for this last biennium. Want to make sure that we have a robust list, and it captures everything that council believes should be captured in these categories, and then other priorities. And then you'll see. Here that we go to the next, which are goals for the next biennium. We're really interested in capturing council's opinions here, so that we can make sure that when we're developing the budget and meeting with the mayor, that we. Know what the goals are of council. So I will be sending this out, either if not tonight, tomorrow morning. But wanted to pause for a moment, see if there's anything that I'm missing, anything, any questions? Anything I can answer tonight before, I put a deadline on this, which will be. May 31-ish, first week of June, because we'll start our department budget meetings, I'm gonna go. Here, for telling you, councilmember Naplin, and then Shaver.
Oh, you're unmuted.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Naplin, go ahead.
Yeah, I wasn't able to be at the meeting where these were discussed, are you saying that when you're gonna send it out to council, that we would have an opportunity to give feedback? Or like, what are you looking for? Right, so when I email this back out either tonight, or probably not tonight, it'll probably be tomorrow morning. Um, yes, if you could go into the categories and just note your feedback on, so we'll use this as an example. We did a sticky note exercise in retreat, so vibrant economy, what we want for the future. These boxes reflect the sticky notes that were submitted by council as part of that retreat exercise. So one way to do it is if you just want to go in and drop a comment, you can do it in the side margins. Or you can add notes here to reflect your input into these different categories. So in that box where it says mayor's response, am I just write Mayor Naplin's response, and write something there, is that what you're saying? Um, no, so mayor's response is mayor's response, so please don't use that space. Oh, is that for your mayor's? Yeah, okay. Um, but if you want to either drop a comment in, or somewhere between, uh, can you see my cursor? Yeah. Um, somewhere between vibrant economy and the mayor's response in this spot here, either drop a note, or drop a comment in the margins. I will go back and edit this and then send it back out.
Hey, councilmember Shaver?
Yeah, it was pretty much the same question, I missed the meeting due to my own scheduling negligence, by the way. But, but it's okay if I throw in some of my thoughts, I guess, thank you.
Yep, before we finalize this, I wanted to make sure that I came back one more time and captured as many council members as I could.
Yeah.
Um, because I knew we had some absences. Um, but I also want to be mindful of the timeframe, because we need to start building budgets, so, uh, kind of quick turnaround here. So end of May, first week of June, so that we can use whatever you're putting into our budget.
Well, appreciate the ability to throw, you know, throw some of my thoughts, so thank you.
Yes, of course.
Great, councilmember Kufel, did you have any questions?
No.
Alright, the only thing I would say is thank you for putting this all together, I, I know it's a process to grab all those sticky notes and stuff without losing any. And appreciate the second round to go back in and add additional comments.
Well, I will share that this is one of the first exercises we gave to our new interns. And it is a good lesson in government process, pull the sticky notes out, make sure that they are categorized. It was a wonderful opportunity.
That's great to hear, well, we look forward to getting this in email and adding in additional comments to it. Um, so with that, do we want to go ahead, because I think that was the last thing, do we want to go ahead and do city administrator report and get that off of our council agenda?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
Good, screen share again. So here, okay. But I don't often walk in, okay. Okay. Good evening, I think I will turn it over first to our public works director, Director Lenishewski, to report on the public works update.
Oh, good evening, mayor council, average citizen, people in Deski Public Works. Quick update on the public works front, things are very busy, I didn't think about nearly preparing for due ball days and. Unboarding new summer helpers and whatnot, but things are going, things are growing, our large mowing machine is in the shop. Uh, I just found it wasn't working well, we had metal shards, and we can go out pump, so. The good news is, it's fixed, the better news is, it sounds like a lot, but including mow, now and back, it's gonna be about $5,000 to fix, so. You would expect to be quite a bit more, so. Uh, hopefully back doing his job soon, and on that note, Coke Vine Creek replacement culvert is out to bid. So we did buy the culvert itself for $520, um, we are bidding the work to install the culvert now, so the engineer estimate is $28,000. Uh, bid opening is at 10:00 AM on June 4th, so. Recall, we do not have a second meeting in June, and this has to get done in the fish window, so we'll be walking the details on council of. Uh, apparent little bidder and price, so you'll have a council packet item that will have a bunch of stuff in it, and it will say no name and no number, and we'll lock that. With this 142nd sidewalk improvement project, Phase 2 is out for bid as well, open in June 11th, and bring that to the first meeting in July likely. Uh, we did obtain $400,000 additional grant, we originally thought we were only in for 200, so we are 600 to the good on grants. And the engineer's estimate is $720 on that project. Now we'll connect the missing piece of sidewalk between 275th and the current 278 that we built at 142nd last year. Um, and back a little bit onto Big Rock Ball Wheel, uh, the ballpark design, so that Phase 2 is underway. We are working on many things, including survey, environmental work. Land acquisition, which we had a pretty good hit on yesterday and today, uh, nothing yet, we'll bring information as soon as we have it. Uh, but this community survey, we are posting another community survey to kind of piggyback on the survey we provided at the design. The preliminary phase, so that's gonna hit the email streets tomorrow, Jason's gonna push that out. We have got that all ready to go, so that'll be good to see, I think we. It over, but I think it says right there in microplum, but it was like 752, I think, uh, summer submissions last time.
Yes.
So we'll see if we can beat that. So next slide. Uh, toll to water main, construction wise, is effectively complete. So the water main is in service between Big Rock Road and the toll to connection point along the 275 corridor. A couple of pictures there, so the bottom left, so the pipe we used in the underground trenching, as well as the majority of. The ditch that was constructed, which is typically for 48 to deep, uh, was high density polyethylene, HTP. So the bottom left is a fusing machine, so those are 46 pipe, and they're plastic, so those are melted together. Takes about 15 minutes to melt each joint. Um, and then it's pressure tested, some on Gandhi, 500 PSI, it's crazy. Uh, the middle image is a little hard to see, but the retrieval pit is ahead of, is in the core, around the picture with the water. And you see a little, little hole at the top of the water, about a half moon. Um, the metal retrieval drill bit is. This picture, so this is looking south, so the drill bit is 950 feet away. Drilled under the creek, and then you see like a little pineapple looking thing, that is the end of the drill, and that is the reamer, it's called. It spins as it moves and squirts out its, this biscuit, uh, solution. Keep the hole from caving in, but yet providing that communication to move the pipe, and then it drags 950 feet of pipe under the earth and to the other side, it's amazing. No problems were encountered, it was a super clean drill, a super clean pole, so. Uh, kudos to the team of contractors who did that work. Uh, the far right is an aerial picture of the drone, but being at the retrieval pit, and then back to the north, you can kind of see the gray line at the top of the picture, that's 275th. So, uh, next slide. And that's just the profile of the 950 foot drilling that was undertaken to complete the work. Next slide. And yeah, it's a little hard to see, but the bottom left is a piece of HTE pipe, it's about an inch and a quarter exterior thickness. Ductal and pipe itself, that's on the file, creates an inch thick, so very thick material. Uh, the middle image is a bow on the city's main line in Big Rock Road at 275th, and then the new piping is built onto it. Uh, there's some bending that went on there, you have to restrain your joints on bends due to lateral forces in water that went below the pipe part, if it didn't have extra. Things to hold it in place, and then we had to dive under, it wasn't planned to be a dive job, but we had to dive about 4 feet under a gas main. Um, that was not well identified, and then the upper picture is the drill rig, drill bits, which are having a little rack on the left. The drill machine, and then the truck that provides the, the disc is due to the solutions. I think that's my last slide, any questions about public works, though?
Councilmember Naplin had her end up there for time.
Great, go ahead, councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I was just curious, um, you reminded me of a Boy Scout project, and it got me thinking, have you had any inquiries about? Another one that could potentially be the depot park little shelter stage?
Sure, uh, so two Eagle Scouts currently in discussions, one has applied for his permits to do the patio at like a prefabricated. Uh, with gazebo shelter for a break area out behind the police station, but that is done, he's working on that, we'll have a permit. That's his commitment, he has his approval from his Eagle Board, so room for with Matthew Beaver on that. Um, you may recognize the name, he had a brother, and his brother built the ex-park little spider, it's called Spider. Spider Park, uh, so yeah, he's moving forward. I've had another Cedar Crest student reach out, he hasn't committed, we've provided him. Several opportunities, again, some kids come with ideas, like Skeen Peterson, who did the rebuild of the picnic shelter last year. Um, that was him, not us, uh, so we've provided, we have three shelters, so one in the corner park, close to the river. One, no, two in Taylor Landing Park, close to the river, that little bit that covers, and then the gazebo at the depot. So that one seemed to be a little of this kid's skill set, but he didn't like the others, I'm waiting for a response. So I have been trying to upsell the gazebo, the rest of my buildings to 16 year olds, or 17 year olds, so we'll see if it pays. I think he's running out of time, because you do, don't know Eagle Scouts have to be done another 18th birthday, not a day later, so. I think his date was sometime end of summer, or in fall, I know he's in June. Yeah. Never remembered yet, sorry.
Alright, any other questions?
Councilmember Shaver, how?
Go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, again, more of a comment question, but thanks to you for showing us these pictures, I mean, this, this may be everyday stuff to, you know, to these guys to do this. But to me, it's just an amazing engineering feat to do this kind of underwater drilling, pull this high tech pipe through. Fuse the pipe together, I mean, you know, this is the stuff that, that just, you know, fascinates, fascinates me, so, thanks for showing us the pictures.
Yeah, it was great, and that is the last bit of AC pipe, so I should have reported that, but only no AC pipe left in the city. It's ductile iron, schedule, or C900 plastic, and then HTE now. Most agencies have ductile, cast iron, some still have wood stave, which is cedar, crease of wrapped pipe from early 1900s. AC in a lot of places, it's wild, yeah, we're pretty low.
May 4th, councilmember Kufel has a question.
Go ahead, councilmember.
Thank you, um, I just wanted to ask how long was that bike rated to last for?
Uh, cast, no, ductile iron is 50 to 75 years, this is HTE, so it's much longer.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Cool.
Alright, there's no more comments, we could move on.
Um, I will introduce the community development update with Director Thomas.
Good evening, mayor council, one community member, uh, our PTOF update. Uh, the first draft of goals and policies and park classifications have been internally reviewed, and they're gonna go to committee at the end of May, so we're super excited about that. Uh, for the comp plan, transportation capital facilities, we completed first round internal comments of draft elements. Uh, for the capital facilities plan, we have our first internal draft completed, we got it yesterday or today. And that's an internal document that our city engineer is doing a lot of the work on, and then our consultant. And our internal team will review that as well, so we're excited about that. Uh, staff is reviewing the land capacity, work from the consultant, so we're sort of now the meeting with our consultant on Friday to go through that documentation. Uh, current development inspections, working to keep pace. Um, so we're, you know, like, it kind of goes up and down, but it's mostly up, um, and it's gonna get busier, it's just that time of year. Uh, we're working on our next draft of the sign code, and that's based on the comments that we received from planning, commissioning, council. Um, our associate planner, a seller from last day is this Friday, so we transitioned that project over to try myself, so we're each gonna take a couple of different sections. And that will come to the council in the March 21st segment. And that will come to the council in the March July segment. Uh, what's the purpose or what are we doing now? So every meeting from here on out until eternity, I'm just kidding, probably until the end of the year. We're going to talk about just a little bit of our comp plan, just so we can get a little bit of time together. So this evening I wanted to talk just a little bit about our economic development element, because we have started getting data, which I always think is fun. Data is good to share with your community. Um, it provides a roadmap for our economic vitality, and it's the growth of our businesses and our culture and those types of things. Um, we want to know how do we support the prosperity and the growth of existing and new businesses? You know, a lot of that's about retention as well, so looking at those types of policies, but also discussing ways to balance and diversify all of our uses. And then, uh, promote revitalization and sustainability, uh, existing, um, businesses. So here's some fun facts that we put together. There are over five residents for every job. That's from the twenty twenty census. We don't have newer data. Um, some of them we have new data on, some of them we don't. Uh, Duval share the workforce age adult eighteen to sixty-four has remained steady at sixty-four percent from the last decade. So we did see a lot of similarities, but we also saw, saw some things change. Um, so for example, the median household income in twenty twenty-two was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That's a fifty-one percent increase from ten years ago. That's, that's pretty significant. Um, also, almost one-third of our working population in Duval does remote work. I don't think we were surprised that we wanted to get the data on that. And we don't know if that's as a sample, if we'll see that in the next decade as well. We don't know for sure if it's kind of a leftover from the pandemic, um, so we'll, we'll see. Uh, our average commute time is about thirty-two minutes, and that's really to the redmond area. Um, it grew by about two minutes over the last, um, decade. I think people would probably argue about that, but we'll go with that data for now. Um, construction retail business generated sixty-five percent of Duval's total taxable income. I don't think we're surprised by at least the construction, because we just have a lot of construction over the last decade. Uh, these are some of our employment trends, so Duval experienced slow and steady job growth for a veteran community. So we really need to look and work towards that over the next decade moving forward. Uh, remote workers increased from six to twenty-eight percent from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-two. Well, you know, we won't be able to get new data for this year, but what we'll do is the next couple of years, will we look at that to see if it changes post pandemic? Because twenty twenty-two, we were still really in that, you know, work from home mode. Uh, the top growth sector in services is healthcare, education, accommodation, and services. Uh, so you can see we did a chart over here for the different sectors and looked at two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-two and the percentage change. I don't think I really saw anything super surprising, except for, you know, the finance insurance and retail estate services. It's gone down. I'm not, we're not sure why, so we might have a look into some of that data. And then you can see there's a nice bar chart over there for total employees and percentage change. So let's talk a little bit about our competitive position. So this is all we've got slot exercise that is done almost every time we do economic development work. So we're looking at our strengths and our opportunities and the challenges, and one of the items that we're going to look at with council and planning commission at one of our workshops this summer. Is any of the comments at the above or anything missing from the list, so this will go out. I'll get this email out to you after this meeting, and I'll go into the council packet. And on the website, I don't want to go through each one, but I'd like you to take a look at them over the next month or so, we'll come back and talk about them. Thank you.
Uh, questions for Director Thomas?
Uh, stated more than a question, so Laura mentioned on her front page. Uh, Larissa should have a fairly solid draft copy of the CFP. That we're going to stick in next council meeting, just written report. It's a busy meeting, we'll talk about it, we'll come and present it in, I think, July, but that one has to be done just before the conference. That should build them all the city's facility. Pretty broken.
Mayor for time, councilmember Napland has her hand up.
Go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, I had seen the council, uh, planning calendar, but I thought maybe this week we were going to have a presentation maybe on. Environmental sustainability part of the comp plan, and then it was gone from. The, um, the calendar, the planning calendar, I was wasn't sure.
It will come to us. We just had to push it because we had more dealing with the stash and storage and churning, but and so I had to prioritize the work. But we will get it to council.
I think you just didn't know the date, but it was.
Yeah.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, any other comments or questions? Are we good to move on?
Move on.
Sounds like it.
Great, um, so just a few updates from City Hall. Uh, the first is a reminder, if you could get me any comments you have about busking. Um, by May twenty ninth, just send me an email. Uh, the ordinance was covered last meeting. Uh, for comments, it can either be, I'm not interested in this at all. I've looked at the ordinance. I'd like to make these edits or corrections. Any kind of feedback is fine. Um, we do need to get back with the individual who asked to busk summer stage. Uh, we could say we're not ready this year. I mean, there's lots of answers here. Uh, there is not a impetus really to. Have the busking work completely finalized this summer. So I would say it's. It's not necessarily not a priority, but there isn't. A huge rush on the part of the city to make this happen. So. I would like, however, to come and get a feel for where council is at. I can put it later in the planning calendar, you know, we could revisit this in the fall or the winter. Uh, so please, if you could just give me a temperature check, the comments, interest level by May twenty ninth, I'd appreciate it, so I can figure out how to place this in. Um, tomorrow, there is a library event regarding, uh, celebrating freedom to read. It's from six to seven. Uh, they asked for me to promote it. They're doing a big national campaign on celebrating, uh, freedom to read, and. Tomorrow night is the Duval event, and we'll start with a thirty-minute question and answer, and then I think there's a presentation, or start with a presentation, and then there's question and answers about our campaign. Uh, so. Because we're out of order on this presentation, uh. Do need to tell you that council position one is vacant, uh, due to operational law. So we will be posting for that council position as council member Isaacson's position. Uh, the vacancy will be out tomorrow, uh, notification. We have to post that vacancy for twenty-one days, so if you know anyone who would be interested in serving on council, we'll be putting together the promotional materials. And submitting the application tomorrow. The position must be filled, the ninety-day window by August sixth. So wanted to talk a little bit in the meeting about how to plan for. The recruitment process and interview process, so. We have the application open until June twelfth. So that's the twenty-one day window. Um, there are provisions in the application process that if you get under three applications. You can review the applications and deliver it in a single council meeting. Which would push this to the, with the calendar and kind of getting everything reviewed to the July sixteenth council meeting. If, however, we have more than three applications. Uh, there is a secondary process, which is on July fifteenth, council will meet an executive session to narrow the applications to three. And then you would have your deliberative process in this meeting. The challenge is the next meeting is August sixth, and it's national lineup. It is also the due date for when you must sell, and then council member. So we can talk about it again on July fourth, once it's kind of sunk in with everyone, and I'm kind of throwing out this new. And we can talk more about it, um. But potentially, we will either have to hold a, a special meeting on July twenty-third in order to cancel the August sixth meeting. Or we will have to have the August sixth meetings earlier, so you can also do national. Um, so just want to kind of put that out there that July, we have some urgent business that we'll have to attend to.
So to be honest, but when will we, uh, when will the applications be open tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
And the mayor and I have both spoken to.
You both.
We have both spoken to councilmember Isaacson.
Okay.
Uh, the recruitment for performance specialists and associate planner will go out next week. Uh, we will also be doing a second round interviews for the code enforcement officer hopefully next week. And it looks like we are finally, our new deputy city clerk started Monday. And I believe chief has chosen finalists for the police administrative specialist position, so we are kind of working quickly through our open recruitments. And I'm really excited about the quality of candidates. We have. Some very strong applicants for the code enforcement officer position. We're pretty excited about bringing someone on who's going to, I think, bring a lot of knowledge to the city, so we're really excited about that. Uh, June fourth, part of the planning calendar is that we are going to have Chief Lane with Eastside Fire, who's our fire chief, come to talk about fireworks. Um. Uh, Chief Keller also has experience from Baffle that he's going to bring and share to council regarding fireworks and Baffle's experience with regulating fireworks. We are also going to prioritize, um, uh, sending out. Information to the public on public comment. Uh, I know there's an interest at council on getting the public's feel about where they are relative to fireworks. And so we are going to advertise public comment for the June fourth meeting, um, and say. Fireworks is on the agenda. If you want to voice her, please come to this meeting. Um, so be looking for that in the next week. That push for public comment should go out on next Tuesday. And then I have one more slide, and then I'll open up for questions. So. We were approved for the Port of Seattle grant. Um, so good news, we have two new events that we're in the middle of planning. The first will be a fall or Halloween event in Doherty Farm. And then the second will be a winter, not train to train, a winter train themed event at the depot. Uh, so we're going to be, as soon as kind of summer stage kicks off and we have everything kind of settled down, we'll start planning for the fall and winter. Um, but we're very excited that Port of Seattle gave us that grant, we have the opportunity to bring some new, new events to the city. And then, uh, there's going to be a group of us working at Duval Days. Uh, so one of the things we're going to do is we're going to seek feedback for the cultural commission regarding future of art and, um, future of art activities in Duval. And a theme for the mini market mural. We have comp plan activities, um, that are scheduled for Duval Days, so both Director Thomas and Naomi will be here for Duval Days doing that work. Um, we're going to advertise a survey response for Big Rock Ball Field, and we will also have an emergency management booth and information. So Luke, our emergency management coordinator, will also be working on Duval Days, and Rita and I will be working. Just to be helpful and to do the cultural work. And then to your right is the draft, but almost final, um. brochure or flyer for the music crawl series. Uh, so Morgan Henley shared that with us, and at the top, you'll see that our logo is there. So it's Morgan Henley presents fueled by the city of Duval.
I think that we're helping try. Yeah. Yeah. I see, I see.
Change the yellow.
Yeah, yeah, the yellow is a little hard.
Yeah.
Um. Let's see if I can, let me go to my PowerPoint presentation. Well, the answer is, I will send this out. I, I don't, I don't know what I did to my screen, but it's not good. But, uh, yeah, let me see, let me go to my screen. Hang on, I think I can do it. Let me make it really big, and then I will share my screen again. Let's see.
While you're doing that, I just want to say thank you for, I don't know how the timing worked out to get Duval Days incorporated into the public engagement, because that's such a huge event. And I hope you guys get a lot of feedback during it.
Uh, so it made it a little bit bigger, Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, yeah, no, good, good, I can, I can almost read it.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, it's still a work in progress, but, uh, we have a flyer and, uh. Yeah.
That's great. I'm going to get nine Saturdays, well, that is terrific.
Nine Saturdays, yeah, and I believe if I am correct, four locations, nine Saturdays.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, uh, ready for any questions. Mayor for time, councilmember Napland has a question.
Go ahead, councilmember Napland.
Yeah, I'm super excited at all the different things we're doing. Um, I was wondering, have we considered, you know, maybe writing up a press release to talk about some of the new initiatives like. Flower baskets, the music crawl, um. You know, the court events too, I mean, all the details maybe would need to be in the press release, but just to let people know. Um. I know that, uh. This Napalm Valley Record, um, I think they would be happy to have some type of little article or something about our. Initiative, economic development initiatives, but it's really helpful for them to get, you know, potentially a press release to kind of. Consolidate the information so that they could be, you know, kind of partner with us on promoting and raising awareness throughout the Napalm Valley.
Uh, we can link into writing a press release. That's a great idea. We are going to advertise this year, um. So part of the economic development grant money that was given for summer stage. We are going to spend some of it to put, uh, summer stage in parent map. I don't know if any of you parents have used parent map. I used to use it regularly. Uh, so we got a good rate of parent map, and it is also going on Everout, um, if you ever use it, um. It's part of the strangers events, um, but they list everything. I mean, every festival, restaurant opening. Um, so if you go onto everout dot, I don't know if it's dot order dot com, and they have Seattle and Portland, and it. Every weekend new list, things to do this weekend in Seattle. Um, it's a great place to look for concerts and restaurants and festivals. So we're going to advertise summer stage in both of those places this year. Um, but press releases are always great too, so yeah, happy to get to the center of Atlanta.
Do, do we, can I ask a poll? Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, do we have, we heard that on the other grants that we were kind of still finding in detail, like you said, Tulp, and there might have been another one that we were still kind of unsure about, Oxbow maybe?
Um, well, Oxbow didn't submit an application, so we need to work on a new concept for Oxbow, or continue to work on the Oxbow concept. Um, so update on economic development grants, and I was going to probably next week or the week after reconvene. Reconvene the economic development grant community or committee. Um, so so about until we still haven't heard back. I gave them until May twenty-fourth to let us know if they were accepting their grant. We haven't, I wrote to them, I believe, on April seventeenth, but I haven't heard anything back. Um. Northwest Art Center is declining their grant. And we heard from the farmer's market, I believe, yesterday, um, that they might not need all of their grant money. Um, usually you don't have people turning grant money back, but, uh, so we're going to try to meet with them, I believe, next week, Rita. Um, to find out how we can support the farmer's market and, you know, if they have any precedents, so they're in transition. Uh, so with that, we need to reconvene the subcommittee. To maybe choose more projects, and, um, we also turned down the bid for the ban bulk, so we need to. Look at that again.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments?
Uh. Question, yeah, thanks, uh, and I'm sorry, you mentioned ban bulk, and put the question in my mind. Can we get another banner? Uh, we have ban bulk down by the, or close to the intersection of, uh, Woodville, Wall Road and, and Main Street. Uh, that's not, those aren't being used, and I, I don't know, is it because we don't have a banner for?
Uh, I can't, they, they do actually get used pretty regularly, they go up for a couple of weeks usually, uh, we just have one go, come down.
Okay, well, so we have, right on, we have, now we have one for Duval Days on the intersection of Stevens, you think?
Yeah, that's all, you have the little banner poles that are for the eight foot banner, is that the one you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about the one over the highway, uh, down, down close to, uh, Woodville Wall Road. We, we, we have two ban of poles down across the highway.
You'll see something go on there tomorrow, actually, for Duval Days.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Any other questions?
All right, well, I mean, I, you know, we've got a few minutes left. I don't know if you wanna try to do council reports or if we just want a little bit more of a break before the council meeting?
Break the cheese, Rester.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and adjourn at six fifty-three and be back at seven, thanks everyone.
All right, it's seven o'clock, uh, so we've got one council member just about coming out of the restroom and then we will gather and then we get started.
Wait.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand twenty-four, Duval City Council on board, it's seven a.m. John Queens rise and join me and Les Lee. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of the American and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Eric, would you please take a roll?
Mayor Okerlander?
Here.
Mayor Protem McHenry?
Here.
Mr. Shaker?
Here.
Mr. Mercer? Mr. Supple? Ms. Napland?
Yeah.
Ms. Kupel?
There.
We have a quorum. Uh, and with that, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Seena from council, I will note.
Here.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I apologize, I, I don't know if it made a sound when the handle went up. Um, I just wanted to note, um, we were informed of an extenuating circumstance for Councilmember Mercer tonight. And Councilmember Supple is attending a city hosted training, so for that reason, I wanted to add excuses for them to this meeting. Or move to make excuses.
Any objections from the council?
No.
Seena? Uh, the only other item, uh, to note is that we did, um, city administration report during, uh, committee and the whole. So that would be scratched in the evening's agenda as well. And, uh, someone like to make a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Someone to.
It's been moved in second to approve this evening's agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, moving on to proclamations, we have three this evening. Uh, the first is National Public Works Week. Whereas the foundation of any thriving community rests upon the infrastructure and services provided by public works professionals. And whereas these dedicated individuals work tirelessly to design, build, maintain and improve our roads, bridges, water systems. Parks, public buildings and other essential structures that contribute to the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas the theme for National Public Works Week twenty twenty-four, stronger together, reflects the collaborative efforts of public works agencies, communities and industry partners to address challenges. Develop resilient infrastructure for the future. And whereas the contributions of public works professionals often underappreciated are indispensable to our nation's safety, health and prosperity. Their work directly impacts our daily lives, ensuring we have safe roads, clean water and functional public spaces for which we should be deeply grateful. Whereas during this week, we not only recognize but also celebrate the dedication, expertise and innovation of public works professionals. Expressing our gratitude for their unwavering commitment to serving the public good. Now therefore, I Amy Okerlander. Mayor of the city of Duval hereby proclaim May nineteenth through twenty-fifth is Public Works Week. I call upon all citizens to recognize the vital role of public works in our daily lives and to express appreciation for all those who work tirelessly to keep our community safe, functional and resilient. I would like to express my gratitude and that of our community to the Duval Department of Public Works. Your ideas, efforts, innovation and dedication make our beloved city not only safer, but a great place to live. Uh, next one is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islander Americans have made invaluable contributions to the cultural, economic and social fabric of our nation. Enriching our communities with their diverse languages, traditions and experiences. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the achievements, resilience and vibrant cultures of Asian and Pacific Islander communities in the United States. And whereas the rich tapestry of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage encompasses a multitude of ethnicities, languages, religions and customs. Reflecting the beauty and complexity of our multicultural society. And whereas throughout history, Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have played pivotal roles in shaping our nation's history. From contributing to the building of the Transpot Melon Railroad to advocating for civil rights and from advancing innovation and technology in the arts to serving with courage in our armed forces. And whereas the theme for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month twenty twenty-four, unity and diversity underscores the importance of recognizing and celebrating the sugar mountains that unite us while honoring the unique contributions of Asian and Pacific American, Islander Americans to our collective heritage. Now I therefore, I Amy Okerlander, mayor of the city of Duval, here, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-four as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. I invite the wonderful community of the city of Duval to actively participate in and celebrate the rich heritage and diverse contributions of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans. Thereby reaffirming our collective commitment to fostering inclusivity, equity and understanding in our city. And the final proclamation this evening is for Public Service Recognition Month. Whereas a public service is a noble calling that embodies the spirit of selflessness, dedication and commitment to the greater good. And whereas all those who serve in our government agencies at the local, state and federal levels tirelessly work to uphold values of democracy. Protect the rights of citizens and provide essential services to our communities. And whereas public servants, the unsung heroes of our society, work tirelessly in diverse roles, including healthcare, education, law enforcement, emergency response, environmental protection and social services and more. Often making personal sacrifices for the greater good. Whereas the theme for Public Service Recognition Month twenty twenty-four, honoring those who serve, underscores the importance of recognizing and celebrating contributions of public servants to our nation's wellbeing and prosperity. And whereas public servants often labor behind the scenes, facing challenges with resilience, innovation and compassion without seeking recognition or praise. Now therefore, via result that I Amy Okerlander, mayor of the city of Duval, hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-four as Public Service Recognition Month. And as beneficiaries of their service, I urge the Duval City Council, all residents of the city of Duval and all those present, please join me in expressing gratitude. And appreciation for the public servants for their unwavering dedication, professionalism and service to our country. Thank you, Duval staff. We wouldn't be here without you, thank you. All right, uh, moving on to comments from the audience, uh, I will go ahead and read the rules into the record. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration. While represented in organizations, may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to PO Box thirteen hundred, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine. Or deposited at the city hall drop box located at one five five three five, Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards and its commissioners solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitters instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently furnished to the city council or the relevant board or commission. It's important to note, however, that written comments will not be orally presented during this council or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the new deadline for written comments will be shared with council at the next council meeting as per the city clerk's report. Um, with that, if we have any members of the audience that would like to speak, please approach the podium and, uh, provide your names and you'll have three minutes to speak to whatever topic.
I want to name, I'm not further here, John, I'm some citizen of Duval. Uh, just vacated city council position number one, that everyone here probably knows, I, to my surprise, exactly. Um, I wanted to take the time and say thank you, first off, to all of you, for what you do. Just had a very, uh, hopefully written proclamation to our staff and citizens. Uh, so thank you very much for what you do. I also want to say thank you for your patience, uh, with my scenario, my job, um, put, it's lived by, uh, actual work on staff and I was unaware of that. I try to be sensitive to that, I always express sympathy and, um, was very, very respectful of your time, hoping to do that. However, what I wanted to come to be as well, to express was a bitter frustration with how this happened. Uh, we have council procedures that I know, they say three consecutive absences, you get vacated. But for almost three years now, I've been absent and thought I was being excused for my absences. And it was a surprise to me to get called mayor today, saying, oh, come, it's not her words, my words, um, she was very sad as well. I was told, we called, uh, at the jury today and said, I don't know what's going on, I joked with the mayor today and said, well, maybe I was putting my name back into the vacancy. And, uh, hopefully you guys know the law, you're invited back now, I miss, mystery again, but my job doesn't allow that, it just happens. Uh, again, I think I missed three before, uh, maybe we're just trying to force you both, that's good. Make it learn, make things better for all of us. But I learned that our procedures, I guess, are being cited, the examples, not the features of being cited, that it's not good calls, work is not good calls, and this city council. It's a bit bothersome, I can understand that too, it doesn't say it in there specifically. I want to share that with city council, that's why I'm showing up anymore. It's not because I quit, as a staff member approached me today and said, I heard you quit, no, I didn't quit. I want you to know what happened, I was told I had to leave because of this. And maybe city council might wanna revisit the rules, uh, change it, because it's gonna prevent people like me from continuing the service in council board. Or people who are applying because their jobs aren't permitted. Uh, so you're limited to your pool and the cross section of your city that can be here. Uh, I don't think the chair picked the rule and chose it for me to be vacated. Uh, we can't do that, I mean, I've looked through a lot of rules and one of the things that has recently come up and I would like to leave attention to is. Uh, there's something very specific, like there's been a day on virtual meetings where you had to be on video or not. Council rules did not apply. Uh, but we've tried to save in the benefit of our community to do that. Those things I think we should learn. By example, I get vacated, maybe we're going to change our rules to better itself. Uh, but I really want to end, I'm very frustrated, I really am very frustrated with, uh, but it's all because of that pride, I was enjoying service. Uh, and, uh, I mean, we're really going to end this, thank you. for uh, you all committed to your power. But please keep doing it. Make it a better, better city every day that we can. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Um, seeing, uh, Councilor Schaefer.
Uh, yeah, due to the, I guess, the the directors of this, of them, they came on me as councilman uh, by quite surprise. And here's my surprise. I thought as long as council decided it was acceptable for another council member to be absent, uh, that would be uh, that absence is accepted and we simply move on with the court. So I for one, I suspect the rest of the council too, would like to understand the basis of what just happened by the, the, I'm not even sure what the right word is dismissal of council member Isaacson. What, what specifically caused this? Or is it written in council procedures that work is not an acceptable excuse, especially when notified?
I will um, turn that over to the city administrator, um, because it was news to me yesterday as well. So this came up quickly.
Um, yes, so uh, according to RCW thirty-five A, um, so I was asked to investigate or just look at the um, the minutes and uh, talk to the attorney. So under RCW thirty-five A, the statute reads that if there are three consecutive unexcused absences, it be positioned immediately vacates. No council conversation, nothing. It operates as an immediate vacation effective May seventh. So council is responsible for excusing every single meeting, those that they want to excuse, the absences that they want to excuse. So we looked at the council minutes, we looked at the video, and for the last three consecutive meetings, um, there was an absence and no excusal by council, no motion, no second, no excusal. The both Daniel and Oscar looked at it and said that unfortunately, that's the way the statute works. I, I don't have a role in that. I was just asked to document and review.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. So first of all, if I go on for a while, please someone say something to me. Uh, but I would look again, because of the seriousness of the situation, uh, I'd like to verify that the ex-council member Isaacson did not ask for an excuse from those meetings. Is that true?
Councilmember Isaacson wrote uh, to Mayor Protem via text regarding his absences. Uh, those texts were reviewed by council and it was determined that they were not good cause.
Okay, so.
They did not call, qualify as good cause under the current council procedures.
Oscar, do you have your hand, Jerz? We can let um, the city attorney on this panel, it's gonna be great.
I'm gonna drag the screen over to I'm promoting him to the panelist. Just one second.
Wait, uh, trying to speak, please. Oscar, you're on. So as long as you're on mute, you're ready to go. You're on mute.
Thank you, and I apologize. Normally John um, lets me in at the beginning of the meeting and so uh, I'm sorry I was not here for the, or I've, I've, I've watched the full discussion, but I haven't been able to participate until now. So, so essentially the way it's city administrator McNabb described it very well in terms of how the RCW works where once you've reached your third meeting without an excused absence, the vacancy happens by um, by operation of, of law and um, my understanding is that, um, I mean, if you look at the council rules, the provision talks about how absences may be excused for good cause by a motion, second, and majority vote of the council members. Examples of good cause include a council member's serious illness, the serious illness or death of a council member's family or friend, or a commitment relating to city business which would preclude the council member from participating in the meeting. So those are the examples that are listed in the council procedures. But at this point, um, if the council had wanted to excuse an absence, it would have needed to have done so prior to the end of the third consecutive meeting in order to um, um, in order to have that act, absence be to be excused. And this is an issue that came up a lot for us in my time at MRSC and I, I just happen to know that, that um, the view amongst municipal attorneys is that the, the RCW um, results in a vacancy automatically by, by operation of law. Um, and that's how that statute is um, is interpreted.
So it did not preclude work. However, it just provided examples of possible excuses. So if council decides that work is an acceptable excuse, this council, I assume that we can do that. Is that correct?
I don't think you can do that at this point because I think, uh, I think you could have done that at the first or the second or even the third meeting. Um, but since there were three consecutive absences, the way the RCW um, is, is, is worded, it says if a council member fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings of the council, uh, without being excused by the council, then the council position becomes vacant. And so, um, so there's now a vacancy and um, and, and, and I don't think you can unring the bell at, um, um, at this point from a legal standpoint.
Hold on just a moment, council member. So this is not on our agenda to discuss. So I'd like a question to be asked. So does council want to amend the agenda to have discussion right now?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Sure.
Is there a second? Okay, motion and a second to amend the agenda to discuss council vacancies? All those in favor, please say aye. All those, please say no. Motion passes and we can continue. Uh, Councilor Schaefer.
Okay, so until it gets like a little blind side.
Oh, and actually, council member, or Mayor McHenry as well. So Councilor Nathlin and then McHenry, then Schaefer.
Uh, I just, I'm, first of all, you said council reviewed it and I keep thinking about legal council and review the text, or do we mean council members? Legal, okay, perfect. And then um, I was curious if I'm, I'm trying to figure out what three meetings it would have been because the last meeting we had was a, like a joint workshop, I think, with um, the planning mission. Would that consider the regular, no?
That's okay.
So that one. So there were three others. That's high. Correct. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to explain that I had brought it up with our city administrator in one of our weekly meetings. I was expressed concern that it had been a while and, you know, showed her the text thread. This is what I've been getting, but I wasn't sure if it rose to the level of excusal. I know it's not just up to me to motion to excuse a council member, but I had been typically doing it and I had a lot of other things going on and I just was worried we were losing track. Um, and so, you know, when it was investigated and she counted and found that it had already been that, and then as our attorney said, you can't unring the bell at this point, I was surprised as well. Um, I do recall a conversation we had when we were discussing our council procedures with our former attorney. And we brought up the work part and we decided at the time to not insert work because at the time, our attorney had said, well, if your work conflicts with too many meetings, then maybe this isn't the right opportunity for you to serve the city. So at the time, council decided not to add that. Um, just for a bit of what I remember at least from that discussion we had around it. So anyways, I hope that helps just add a little more light to it and um, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Councilor Schaefer?
Uh, well, a cou- couple, I guess, comments. First of all, I think council, uh, as a whole, needs to make, make that decision. I, I don't recall that discussion and I'm, I'm telling you truth, I guess I'm not sure I was here for that. Uh, if work uh, should be an acceptable excuse. But I do feel a little blindsided by this. At the last council meeting, it's not like any of us were told, hey, unless we excuse John this time, uh, we're gonna kick it out. Uh, we were not told that. We were not aware of that. So yeah, I understand that's, that is our procedures. But really, this came in through the backboard. Uh, and uh, frankly, uh, as a council member, uh, I think it is not only unfair to John, I think it's unfair to be canceled as a whole. So I want to, you know, I, I think the council needs to decide if work is an excuse or not. Frequent absences, and I know John is frequently absent because, because of work. Uh, secondly, what constitutes a request for an excuse? I, I guess since apparently his text did not was good.
The council procedure specify what a absence or requesting the absence, um, what the rules are. You are to notify the city clerk with the CC to me. It's in the council procedures.
Okay, okay. Actually, I, I didn't know because I, when I go on location, I just shoot out a general, you know, but they, that was a pretty current, so I wasn't looking, but but, but I'm not sure John was ex-council member Isaacson was even aware of, of that because I wasn't as a council member. I did, like I said, shout out an email, notify people. I wouldn't be there. Uh, anyway, um, you know, I would actually, you know, maybe we definitely have four councils, council members or not. I guess I, I would with hopefully a bigger forum like to make a uh, a decision if we want to have work as an acceptable excuse. I think we need to make a very conscious decision there. Uh, due to maybe the urgency of this, maybe we need to make that tonight, even though we have only four council members.
Um, I, I do want Oscar, our attorney, to respond to the the um, insinuation that this was a city decision. This is a state law issue. So um, I want to make that very clear for the council and the record. So Oscar, can you please reiterate?
Yeah, no, it is, it is a matter of state law and the way the statute is worded. And I will say that when I, when this issue was first brought to my attention, um, I was really hopeful that um, we could find uh, a way not to be in the position that we're in now, just speaking, um, speaking personally. So um, um, it's, it's based on th- the wording of the statute. Um, our procedures also sort of interact with that, but um, um, it's a, it's, it's a rule from, from the legislature that we um, um, in, in our opinion are required to follow. And um, uh, and, and so, so that's where we, that's where we find ourselves now. Moving forward, the council can have a conversation and consider whether it wants to change its um, procedures regarding um, what constitutes um, grounds for um, for, for being excused. Um, but, but, but that's probably a topic for, you know, future discussion.
Thank you. Um, did anyone else want to speak? We haven't heard from Councilor Coopel before I go back to Councilor Schaefer and then it'll be have gone break things around. So we should put this to bed after that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but if that's a state law, it seems like also we can do is, you know, if it limits on our end, the council.
Uh, Councilor Schaefer and then Nathlin, then we'll close this out. And McHenry.
So you, first of all, in my uh, somewhat, I guess, anger or disappointment over this issue, uh, I did not mean to incite what there was any conspiracy like this. You, you guys, every, we were all on the same boat, sitting, not sitting, not thinking. Well, we almost, we, to John, we gotta pick him up. I mean, I, I know none of us, none of us were aware of it. Uh, so I, when I said I feel a little bit blindsided, I certainly do, but it's no one's, uh, no one's fault. But there are things we can do. I, and I, you know, again, uh, with, you know, with the uh, attorney's uh, help here, I think we can decide that if we, if council chooses to, that work is an acceptable excuse as long as a council member gives proper notification and the council in, in turn chooses to excuse, excuse it from that particular uh, meeting. Uh, so it is within our power, maybe not to change what's already been done, what's done is done, water under the bridge. But it is within our power to change the rulings and then if we choose to, with the next round of uh, recruiting council members, uh, include John in that next round.
City Administrator?
And, and I will share that uh, in my conversation with council member Isaacson this afternoon, I did encourage a potential reapplication. And we just looked into this and discovered it yesterday. So apologies, but it's feeling like the blind side. Um, but this was the most immediate next day that once we discovered that that's where we were, I will share that um, I don't go back and look at every single meeting to keep a tally of council member attendance. I just don't.
That's not standard in most jurisdictions either. So um, it is normally expected that council keeps track.
The, the, the council member is not our, the council, so council is not ours. We can't do so.
Absolutely. Um, Councilor Nathlin and then Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think that's an interesting conversation to have about whether three absences due to work, if work should be excused or something like that. But I don't, I think I'd rather have a conversation on another night. So I know you were hoping you could change it tonight, but my preference would be to have, you know, kind of maybe think over it a little bit more, a little longer tonight. Because I, I do remember actually that conversation with the attorney when that came up and I, I think the community, um, I think it's good for the community to be served by a council member who can frequently attend meetings. Um, and so if it's routine that three meetings in a row are being missed, I, I understand the idea that if your work basically hardly ever election comes these company meetings, and then maybe this, but that's both. So I, I do remember that conversation. And I think maybe we need to revisit, um, yeah, how to proceed under those situations of whether this is a unusual situation that that many absences would happen or it's going to be, you know, more routine. So, um, anyway.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just, I basically, it's all, everything I'm about to say has already been said. I would just encourage Mr. Isaacson to apply when this opens. I think at this point, that is the only way forward now, um, that I'm understanding from our attorney. Um, and I think again, what council member Nathlin said, yeah, that's a good conversation for another night and we need to look at that and discuss it. Maybe get some community way into that as well, see what the barriers are. Um, but yeah, anyways, I, I just encourage you to apply. Um, and I'm sorry it came out like it did and that, you know, I have my worry too. Um, I guess another thing I would just bring up is um, how does council track this? You know, that was my concern. It's not one of my official roles as Mayor Protem, but I was concerned that it might surprise us. I didn't know that it had already essentially happened. Um, so I, I feel bad it got triggered the way that it did and it was sudden and surprised everybody. But um, at this point, we just have to move forward and if you want to apply again, I'd encourage you to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And just of note, you know, there are um, items that I think we've discussed a lot a couple of months, the council probably needs to take a look at the, the rules and procedures again. Uh, and also of note, um, just in general for people serving and elected in the appointed office, um, it is becoming more and more difficult for people to serve because of their work, um, because of families, et cetera. Um, don't live in the same world a little bit in twenty years ago, let alone fifty to a hundred years ago, when most of these standards were created. Um, and so, um, I think that also uh, brings up a larger conversation as well about um, how you recruit and get people to run for, um, or get appointed to and stay active at the city when at the city when uh people essentially are not even getting minimum wage to attend meetings and do their work. Um and so uh this is actually probably a really good example of one of the larger statewide conversations that needs to happen um on the challenges of serving off an office and making sure that public office is accessible to all in the community, not just those that have the time or the money to serve. Um for most, many of us, it actually costs money or has cost us money to actually serve um based on missed work, et cetera. Um so I think um this situation is really unfortunate. Uh from my perspective, I do absolutely encourage um Mr. Isaacson to reapply again. He is a strong, good, balanced voice on this council. Um and I I would like to continue to have his voice on this council. Um but also um the law is the law. We've all taken vows of hold the law, even when the law is difficult. Um so with that, we'll um it sounds like we've got council consensus to move this subject forward in the future. Um and we'll go ahead and do that and move on with our agenda. Uh so with that, uh do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded and approved this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to scheduled items, uh mayor's report, uh we had both the State Government Policy Committee meeting and the first legislative priorities committee meeting for AWC in the last two weeks. Uh both have gone well. Um in the legislative committee, it was mostly over going over what um the AWC procedures are and as well as what was um the current survey results and the agendas of last year. The next meeting will start getting into more actually developing that legislative agenda. Uh a reminder that the Subcommittee on Governmental 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 Association uh quarterly meeting is tomorrow evening in North Bend. Uh so I'm not sure who else is going to that. And then just a final reminder about the AWC annual conference in Vancouver. Um that is fast approaching. It will be a very good conference this year, and it's not too far like Spokane was last year. So I know Mayor Potem, City Administrator are coming down for at least part of it. Um there's still plenty of budget for anyone else that would like to attend. Uh so if you can, I do please uh encourage that as well. And that concludes my report. Uh and since we already did the City Administrator's report, we'll move on to council reports. Does anyone have any council business they'd like to report on? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our presentation. The first one is an update on the North Urban Growth Area from Jerry Barnett, Director of Entitlements of Black and White Development. And Director Cox.
Uh I was asked to put just a presentation together that's kind of like annexation one on one prior to the presentation.
Okay.
So, I just share my screen a little bit. I'm like, is he gonna go forward? Sorry, you guys, I can't see it. My screen is so small, I can barely see it, sorry. Uh so good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the community. Um I'm gonna give a half dozen slides just on annexation process in general, and so kind of help prime the presentation that we have coming up. And this is really related to uh the North UGA. And so what the process is in general is that that's ten percent petition is submitted. That's the first step in the process of an annexation. And that's ten percent of the assessed value. It's a pretty low hurdle. Um and then the city council either accepts, rejects, or modifies the annexation area through a resolution. If accepted, then signatures from the property owners of sixty percent or more of assessed value of the property. The North UGA actually only requires a fifty percent petition because it's over uh fifty percent contiguous to our city limits. And then the city council accepts or rejects the fifty percent petition. After that, it then goes to the King County Boundary Review Board. Once approved, the Boundary Review Board and the city make annex by ordinance, and then it comes back to council again. And then the city council decisions on annexations are not appealed with other things that really this legislative decision gets to be had here. I'm gonna provide just a little bit of history on this property for those that have not been on planning commission or council. And so a little bit as well about statute. Uh we are governed at a state level, accounting level, and local policies for annexations. And uh we use traditionally the petition method. There is also an elected um method as well. All annexations are SIPA exempt. Uh the King County Boundary Review Board uh and the Comprehensive Plan also provide guidelines for annexation. Uh the City of Duba, we have our own annexation plan. It's currently outdated. But we also talk about annexations in our comp plan and our development regulations. We went through the process, so I'll just skip that one. But one of the last steps is we actually have to do a census and notification, which is kind of interesting. That means we actually have to go door to door in those areas. Uh what work do we look at during the process of an annexation? Uh historically, you'll look at environmental constraints, trees, watershed processes, habitat corridors, open spaces, parks, transportation impacts, utilities, uh preliminary neighborhood layout, ethical impact analysis, and level of service impact. Some of them are actually required by statute, others are items that we choose through our annexation plan to review. We have done three attempts at this annexation. I had to go back today and actually look at the history, and I was like, oh, I thought it was two, but it's actually been three times. And so most recently, you can see two thousand eighteen with the fifty percent petition, but you can go back all the way to two thousand five. So we've tried this three times. It stalled out at the end of the two thousand eighteen. It never moved forward to council. There was no action on the annexation.
Well, what was that mean? Quadrant submits fifty percent?
So quadrant was the last group that took that on for the neighborhood. And so they submitted the fifty percent petition and all the and all the materials were at the moving process.
So fifty percent of the landowners?
No, of the assessed value of all of the properties. So they're not all equally assessed. So there's some vacant properties that are smaller, that are worth less. There's others that are developed out that are worth more. It's a really good question. Thank you. Currently, our uh zoning map and our comp plan map um have pre-designated um the area for R four developments. That would be essentially four units per acre. So you can see the permitted uses on the left hand side. And then I just put in the zoning map so that you can see that as well. And then uh and this is kind of the the bulk standards for that. If you're curious to know what would that look like if that annexation came in, a subdivision was approved. And so it goes by what we call our development standard. So those are within our zoning code. So that's like improved surface, setbacks, minimum lot sizes, those types of things. So that is a pretty brief, in the nutshell, uh presentation on on the state annexation one on one. So if you have any questions before our guest comes up, I can answer them, and I can also answer them after as well. Let me unshare.
Uh.
Yes.
One question. Uh is is there a public hearing? You you went through the steps there, but I didn't see public hearing in those steps.
Yes. So we hold public hearings at both a ten percent petition, and then you you pass
Okay.
the ten percent petition by resolution, and then the fifty percent petition comes in. It goes back through planning commission and council. Planning commission makes a recommend recommendation to council, and council holds a final public hearing. And then it goes to the county, King County Boundary Review Board. They hold a public hearing. Then it comes back to the city council for a final action of ordinance, and that's when it becomes effective. It's a very long drawn out process. It is not ours. It is literally out of state.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Um and now our guest presenter could come on to the podium.
Uh good evening. I wanna just start by thanking everyone for their time. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to uh present you guys tonight. Uh my name is Jeremy Barnett. I'm one of the principals of Black and White Development. Uh we're a small land residential land development company based in Oregon. And uh I've been in the Pacific Northwest my entire life between both Washington State and Oregon. And uh my background's been primarily in in land development in some aspects, uh slumber industry. Also working with um habitat-constrained properties with enhancing existing resources. And so I've had a pretty uh diverse background. Um for this project, our our project team uh consists of our company. We've also engaged uh bar housing consulting engineers. They're based in Kent, Washington. They've been operating in this area for over thirty years. They were actually participating in some of the the prior attempts uh at annexation. So they have a pretty good, deep understanding of of the properties involved in the North Urban Growth Boundary. And then also um Homestead Community Land Trust, and they're a they're a nonprofit um in the Seattle area. They have approximately two hundred forty-five homes currently in trust. And we'll we'll kind of talk more about the community land trust because it it's it's an old concept, but fairly new to the mainstream. Um and they have another two hundred homes sort of in process, various stages of of that process. So these are affordable homes. Uh they remain affordable in perpetuity. So so they, we brought them on with sort of a an aspect of our company that uh that we're developing, uh along with a lot of the middle housing stuff. Um is incorporating these land trusts into each one of our developments. So uh tonight, I think really the aim is just to build some awareness around this project. Um as Laura pointed out, you know, there have been some previous attempts, and and it's kind of funny in in my line of work, um you know, timing is is a big part of of what makes a project successful. And so I think as we go through things tonight, just really focusing on on that timing with uh some of the initiatives with uh updating the uh the stuff that the city is updating in the way of the comprehensive planning and and parks and open space planning. Uh we sort of got that timing. We have uh landowners in this area that have sort of come together with our help over the last year to really buy into the idea of of this community land trust. And they're they're actually committed to making some charitable donations as part of this whole development. And then just timing in 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 that, um you know, you guys just recently released your housing action plan, and I think this project um at least our our aim is to align that really, really closely with with that uh action plan. So so diving into the project, um as Laura stated, our intention would be to annex the North Urban Growth Boundary, which is a a approximately eighty-eight acres located at the north end of two seventy-fifth avenue. With, in addition to that annexation, we're proposing to develop about thirty-seven acres of that into a residential community. And so um, you know, we're pretty early in the planning stages, although we've we've been working on this for about a year or so. We're uh we're in the early stages, meaning we've aligned some of what we've designed around to your current planning documents. But I think the overall goal here is just to, you know, come alongside your current process and and make sure this development is fully aligned with everything that you guys are updating. Um the end result being hopefully a model for future development in Duba. Uh sort of incorporating some major aspects, the housing diversity, uh the affordable aspect. And then also just really tying in, uh this is a great opportunity with this area to uh just make natural resources available to to people. Um the the nor- the North Urban Growth Area is sort of a a stranded island in Duba, and I think there's been cer- certainly before my time, some history with that. And so uh I think that's the other important piece to this is sort of bringing that um what is already technically a part of Duba uh into Duba officially and sort of using this development to tie together some some areas in Duba that that uh, you know, hopefully will will bring a a better um better access to to some resources. So uh just to go through the project highlights, we're looking at um based on the current uh density for the area about a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and sixty units. That would be a mix of what we would we would call uh attached single families, so similar to some stuff that you see developed within the city. Um the difference would be we would use a a clustering technique. And so because of all the the resource in that area, we would basically just create sort of a clustering around the natural resources. And so you would have these blocks of attached single families that would sort of lay out with a lot of green space in between them and that and that's just, you know, to protect what's what's there in terms of natural resources and also just to, you know, actually achieve the density uh minimums for the area. In addition to the attached, we would have also a disbursement of single family detached homes and then single family detached homes with uh an ADU. And so the idea there is is just uh, you know, create that diversity. The ADUs represent hopefully a an opportunity for multi-generational living and then also um small rental units. So it's kind of the idea there. And then, and at any time, if you guys won't stop me, I tend to just barrel through. So let me know when I need to take a break. But so uh within the development, we're committed to twenty percent uh of the homes being uh what we would consider affordable. We we call this frontline occupational housing, and and there's some additional uh literature on that at the end of the presentation. But but really, we're targeting uh folks that are eight, fifty to eighty percent of the uh area median income. And so we're committed, again, with the commitments we have from the landowners to make charitable contributions. We would make a a contribution as a company, and that's with no city involvement. Um we would utilize the community land trust, and we would we would have, you know, roughly twenty percent of of all the units in in this development would be would be at that target of the fifty to eighty percent of the uh the area median income. And then uh some further highlights, we end up with within our development area, um a little over four acres of of open space, uh combined with nine acres of of untouched critical areas and habitat corridor. So about thirteen acres within this development that would be um you know, connected by a pedestrian trail, uh you know, and and would remain in sort of a green state. We have uh, I've also included some some visuals that we'll get to that kind of kind of paint a picture for what that development would look like. And uh so moving on, uh just an overview of sort of the highlights of of how um we would align with with the city initiatives, starting with the comprehensive plan, I think. Um our timing now uh with with that process uh underway with the city uh gives us a a really good opportunity just to, you know, figure out what what this development looks like in the eyes of of what truly serves Duba. And so uh that that's kind of, you know, us as a company, we we look to, we used to build homes and and we sort of spun that that piece off of our business. And and the reason for that is we couldn't, we couldn't design residential neighborhoods that really serve communities when we also had to consider a product that we were building in a bottom line. And so um we spun that off. And and so our focus going forward has has just been how do we create a neighborhood, work with cities, and make sure that it serves the community? And then we we can easily go out and find people that uh have a product that fit instead of fitting the product and making the neighborhood conform with the product. So so that's kind of the overarching thing here. Um but comprehensive plan, and so we we sort of And so we we sort of mesh this with the current planning, uh, the housing action plan. We've, you know, laid out a diversity of housing, uh, with the the, uh, attached, then detached products, targeting first time home buyers. Um, we got a small rental possibilities and and the multi-generational housing. Um, and then just that, uh, opportunity for for our frontline occupation housing. So that that's really yet to serve you, well, primarily existing community members. So this isn't targeting bringing new people into the community. This is creating an opportunity for people that might be commuting to the community, uh, people that are already serving the community, firefighters, uh, you know, your teachers, um, you know, just anybody on that front line. So so that's really our our main focus is is targeting those folks. And so, um, I think currently there's a deficit, uh, in the housing action plan of about four hundred and fifteen units that that kind of fall in that category for Duval currently. So, um. So that's within our proposed development. Within the North Urban Growth Area outside of our development, I think this again plays into, uh, the comprehensive planning. I think there are, uh, maybe some opportunities for some multifamily, uh, areas. And then also just some continued cluster housing to, you know, gain some density, but also, um, create some affordability. Uh, so. Uh, moving on to the watershed plan, we have, um, you know, this is this is kind of speaks to my background, but but basically just identifying and protecting the highest quality resources. And then utilizing, um, you know, the disturbance areas to really enhance what's there. So I worked a lot on developments where, um, we had to protect resource areas, which I I think is great. But, uh, usually a high percentage of those resource areas are inundated with, you know, invasive species. And so they're really not truly, um, natural resources that that really serve. And so that's what we would look to do is is, you know, enhance what is there, protect what's viable, and then just create new, um, longstanding resources going forward. Um, most of this area in the, uh, North Urban Growth Boundary is is what you guys, uh, designated as Group C two. That's a low lowest conservation. So it 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 lends itself well to to, um, to development. And then there are some areas of moderate conservation. But I think, um, overall, the North Urban Growth Growth Areas is supportive of of some de- development. Um, I think that clustering approach is is really what would serve, uh, to to work around the natural resources there. I think, w- in addition to that, we've we've looked at, um, you know, obviously, I think this is pretty industry standard, but just using low impact development methods. So, um, a lot of this clustering and a lot of the, uh, the middle housing techniques now are are, uh, based around more private streets. So less impervious areas means, you know, private streets with less, uh, formal sidewalk areas, common parking areas, um, use of of, uh, pervious surfaces. So we would be looking to, you know, develop a strategy around that, uh, working with the city to, uh, just limit the amount of impact that we have in the area. And then, um, just kind of wrapping up with with alignment, we have this, the sensitive areas, which we kind of touched on. Uh, I think, you know, there are a lot of trees and resources in these areas. And again, we would just use consultants and 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 consult with the city on uh, identifying and and protecting the most viable resources. And then, you know, from there, uh, just enhancing the ones that, uh, that are existing. Um, and then with parks and parks, trails and open space plan, uh, we I mentioned earlier, we have about thirteen acres of open space. We anticipate, uh, just within the development area, about a mile of pedestrian trail. So we we've, uh, created some easements and and, uh, through some of the existing, uh, we have some great connection points, uh, to Lake Rasmussen and the Old Duval Water Tank. Uh, there are some existing subdivisions that we can connect to as well to to allow those folks to then, you know, pass through this development area and access some of the some of the resources around the area. So. So I think, um, that's about it. Just as I wrap up, uh, some community benefits. Um, I think one major is is just integrating that area into the city and and providing some city services to, you know, what is now kind of an outlying area. Um, we have the increase in housing diversity and sustained affordability. Um. And then, you know, just creating some small rental, multi-generational housing opportunities. Um, I think that's really all I want to present, other than, uh, you know, hopefully, um, like I said in the beginning, uh, the the real goal of this whole thing is just to really be creating a model for, you know, what future development could look like in in Duval. Um, so. I think that's it. With that, I'll open it up to questions. Anybody else?
Does anyone have any questions at this point? Councilmember who fell?
So is there, I think, with the commercial land trust or the, if I'm understanding this right, the homeowners don't own the real estate, the land itself? Um, then do they get property tax just on the building?
Yeah, that's typically just on what they're purchasing. Yeah, and I I, you know, maybe maybe not for for standing up here to present. But but I did include, uh, breakdown of what we call our our frontline occupational housing. And then also just some some Q and A on community land trust, just so you guys could kind of educate yourself on that. But but basically, yes, the community land trust is a nonprofit. Um, like I said, we have participation where the homeowners, we would be making a contribution. And what we're really doing is providing land to the land trust. And so once the land trust has been managed, they own it in perpetuity. It can never be sold on the open market. And so what they do then is create framework for approving buyers that meet the the, um, income standards. Uh, once those buyers are approved, they're actually purchasing the home. They have to, they have to go and get a a a standard, um, you know, mortgage product. They have to have at least one percent down payment. So so these are, these are homeowners. Uh, they just aren't paying for the land. So that's where that reduction in in the market value comes. Uh, ultimately, they're buying that house. They sign a ninety-nine year re- renewable lease with the land trust. So they could own that house. They can pass it down from generation to generation. Um, they can sell it. They even can participate in the appreciation of that home. It's just fixed so that when they sell it, that home remains affordable to the next approved buyer. And so we're not running into the situation where the home is affordable today and then it's sold on the open market and now nobody can afford it. And so that's that's really the the aim of the community land trust.
Councilmember Natlin?
Yeah, I might have missed it in the materials that were provided, but and you don't have to provide this tonight. But do you have some examples of some developments that would use this model, maybe a junior here or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, that's so. That was, uh, the aim of of, um, sort of partnering with, uh, Homestead Community Land Trust. So they have a great website. You can actually see the the neighborhoods that they're developing. So they've been around for quite a while, um, and they have the two hundred, uh, roughly two hundred forty-five homes in trust right now that are all in. I think they're in King County and some of those surrounding counties, but in this area. Yeah.
And you said you would expect twenty percent of the total homes to be within this land trust?
Yeah.
Thirty-five homes, maybe?
Yes, yeah, roughly thirty-five homes. Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, I this is a a block question. So please excuse me, but what is the financial arrangement between you and the current landowners in this North Urban? Area, uh, meaning you're paid by the current landowners?
No, actually, we seek to purchase. So we're we're entering agreements to purchase the land from the land.
I see. Yeah, I I see. So there's no, uh, there's no current payment. So your company's interest really then is, uh, profiting off buying land from the current landowners and profiting off from that, et cetera.
Yeah, so we would purchase the land from the landowners. Uh, we develop the actual neighborhood short of building the houses. And, yeah, we our business model is being paid for that development work. Yeah, we we would work with the city. We would take this project all the way through to the end, uh, and then sell it lots.
I see. So what what discussions have happened then with the current landowners?
Uh, over the last year, we've, well, if you look at our math example of of the area that we would develop, uh, there's a few landowners that, um, were in various stages of of contract. But in, you know, deep into negotiations, some landowners have signed contracts. Some are ready to sign contracts. They just with the three attempts prior, um, are a little bit weary that, you know, the project will get approval. And so, um, you know, we we've spent the last year really pulling this all together.
And I I know I'm asking more than one question, but I really think it's it's important for council to understand really what the motivation is here from the current landowners and from from the black, black and white development, uh, company, uh, to to understand what's going going on here. Well, it's not fair. So the motivation is profit. I mean, there there's the it absolutely is. Uh, I know there's, you know, there's potential upsides to this, although frankly, I don't think very many. Uh, our citizens and residents in Duval are not in favor of both. They made that very clear through survey after survey. We, the council, have put out those surveys and and know that know that very well. Um, so I I really want to be clear, uh, you know, why we should even consider this, uh, under the current, certainly under the current environment. When, you know, when we are a small city, we're fighting far to be, to ma- maintain ourselves as a small city. And, uh, I really want to be, you know, be clear, and you and your company need to be clear on, uh, why, why we should consider that, you know, otherwise, why we should consider residential growth when there are potential, uh, downsides to that, uh, to to that growth. So, you know, again, so those contracts, then, I assume are depending on us, the council, approving an annexation. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, with no annexation, there's no, no, no project. So, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And to your point, um, yeah, profit is is obviously the motivator of any successful company.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but don't 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 get me wrong. I just want to. The developers, when they talk to us, all you do is flower, you know, flower words. And and yourself included about low income housing, affordable housing, uh, and, you know, and and environmentally friendly development, et cetera, et cetera. Those all sound good, but when we actually consider that, when we actually see what's been done, uh, in other areas, uh, it's all upside by by a long.
Councilmember, I have asked you that. Um, do any other council members have questions? And I know we'll have plenty of more opportunity to discuss the projects, the potential projects, right?
Okay, thank you. We'll carry on.
All right. Uh, moving on to our last item in the business, Agenda Bill twenty-four dash thirty-seven, a proposed amendment to the Duval municipal code, chapter ten, for discussion under our decision. Director Thomas?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers of our community. Uh, this evening, we're bringing forward an ordinance to repeal exception of chapter ten point oh one, which I know we just recently approved in March. It would be the repeal of section three zero eight point one point four. This is specifically for open flame cooking devices. You might be asking, so why are we doing this now? So what happened was is that it was in inadvertently not removed. And so it got adopted and then everybody figured it out. So they created an emergency rule, which I put within the paperwork. Essentially, you're like, okay, what's this open cooking rule? They're barbecues, essentially, for like how do them do flexes? And under the rule that's currently adopted, that we have not yet, uh, repealed, you are able to cook with your barbecue within ten feet of your house. So we are hoping that this evening we can quickly repeal it. Um. I have not seen this happen in all my years, quite honestly, but I think it it just does. And so we found out about it right away. I think we might be one of the first cities to actually do the repeal. So yay, Duval. But we are not implementing it because it would be impossible. Like, we're not going into people's backyards. I think that being that, uh, council could, um, usually have three touches. So I would be asking you not particularly touchable and just authorize signature. Uh, and councilwoman, you go.
I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-four thirty-seven, the ordinance of the city council of Duval, removing section three oh eight, dot one, dot four, open flame cooking devices from chapter ten point oh one construction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is on paper, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have no further business. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned if you don't mind.